Twenty twenty-two Carroll County Public Service Authority meeting to order. I'd ask Mr. McCraw to lead us in the invocation pledge.
And Robbie, I would ask if you would remember Crystal and your prayers.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here together and just for the many blessings that you've provided for us, Lord. We ask you to watch over us as we go through this meeting. And ask that you, Lord, be with those that are dealing with illness, especially for Crystal as she's fighting the COVID and everybody else that's out fighting the COVID. Lord, just ask you to watch over and heal them. Lord, be with those that have lost loved ones. And Lord, be with our country as it struggles through this desperate time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming out. First on the agenda will be citizens' time. And at this time, I'd ask Nelson Montgomery. I mean, Mr. Montgomery, I'll remind you that we do have three minutes to speak, okay?
Sir. Thank you. My name is Nelson Montgomery. I live about four miles north of Hillsville Elementary School, right on two twenty-one. And the reason I'm here today is to request the PSA to look into the possibilities of furnishing water to the areas along two twenty-one toward Duxbury. Probably ten years ago, I wouldn't have been here talking to you. But we've gone through some dry times. A few years ago, our well, our spring went practically dry. And we started conservation efforts. And that helped out. We got through that. This year, we're going through the same thing. And, you know, we're going to town to get showers. We're going to laundromat to do our laundry and so forth. Trying to conserve the water as much as we can. And since this recent rain, since the Board of Supervisors meeting, our well has, or our spring, I'm sorry, has come back somewhat. So we are getting a larger trickle of water now than we were six weeks ago. But this spring has served our family for three generations, never gone dry. But I think it's the sound of times that, you know, I think Carroll County is no longer in the drought area. The drought area has moved on toward the east somewhat. But it's probably going to come back in the hot summertime. And we would like to see some kind of water system to serve our area down two twenty-one. So that the next time that the drought does come close to us, that we'll be able to tap into the county water and protect our family. I can't think of anything else to say, just that, you know, we would certainly appreciate y'all's consideration. As I go down the road to see water hydrants here, water hydrants there, on both sides of fifty-eight, two twenty-one, and fifty-two. It would be a real pleasure to see some fire hydrants down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rebecca Phillips.
Hey. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. You too.
I live also on two twenty-one, less than four miles from the Hillsville Elementary School. And I'm not going to repeat everything that Mr. Montgomery has told you because I am having the same problems that he is having. I've been without water since New Year's Eve. And you tell people that have not lived without water that you have no water. They say, you can buy water? Sure, you can. You can't buy enough for your activities of daily living. I try to live on ten to twelve gallons of water a day. I buy some, yes. And I have friends that'll take my empty bottles home with them. They'll fill them up and bring them back. I've done some research on the internet. And most places that I looked at said that the average person uses eighty gallons of water a day. And I think that's a little high for me. But ten to twelve gallons is way low. And I'm not talking just for myself. I'm talking for all the people in the Duxbury area that are without water. We all have the same problems. We may handle them differently and deal with them differently, but we have the same problems. And I'm going to tell you about three of my problems. The first one are the toilets. You start off the morning with a little bit of water in your toilet. And this is water that you've poured in there out of your bottles. If there's going to be liquid in the toilet, you're going to take those tissues and you're going to put them in a sealed plastic bag beside the toilet. And you're going to use that water until about noon, about lunchtime. Then you're going to take two gallons of water and you're going to flush the toilet. If there is going to be solid waste in the toilet, of course, you're going to have to put those tissues in the toilet. And you're going to have to flush it immediately. And to do that, you're going to have to have about four gallons of water. Because you need to push that solid waste all the way out to your septic tank. If not, it's going to start clogging up your pipes. And one of my neighbors can tell you what a problem that creates. So you flush the toilet with four gallons of water. Then you pour a little more in the bowl. So you'll have a little water in there until bedtime. Then you'll take two more gallons of water and you'll flush the toilet again. So you've used eight gallons of water just on your toilet. It's not a quality of life. It's nasty. And it doesn't smell good either. There's laundry. A basic need, wash your clothes. I go to the laundromat in Hillsville. I have a perfectly good washer and dryer at home in my laundry room. I can't use it because I don't have the water for the washer. So I meet these two other people at the laundromat because we like to go together to the laundromat. We're all in our seventies. We all have underlying medical problems. We stay out of crowds. We've had our injections. We've had our boosters. We wear our masks. We stay out of closed environments with people we don't know. You go in the laundromat. You're the only three people in this closed environment that have on a mask. Not the adults, not the children. And they don't care how close they get to you. And I don't mind telling you, I'm very uncomfortable. At my age, with my medical problems, if I get COVID, I'm in deep trouble. And I know that. But they don't care. I don't like going to laundromat for that reason. Let's talk about showers. A shower is a very pleasant experience. It's warm. It's refreshing. It's relaxing. And you can't wait to get in there. When you get out, you're all warm and comfortable. But you can't do that if you don't have water. Like most of you, I get undressed, either in the dressing room or the bedroom. And I go into the bathroom either naked or with a robe on. You can't drive to Hillsville naked or with a robe on. You'll end up in Twin County in the psych ward or in the jail. So you get fully dressed, fully dressed to go to the shower. And if you're a woman, you're going to put on a little makeup, fix your hair so you look halfway decent when you go out. You get to the building for the shower. And thank God, there is some place that is allowing us to take showers, something the county has not offered us, not even made suggestions of where we could go. You go into the little shower stall. You get undressed. You get into the nice warm shower. You get all warm and comfortable. And it's very refreshing for the moment. You're all warm. Your pores are all opened up. You get fully dressed. You go outside in thirty-degree weather. And I don't mind telling you, you freeze your butt off. That is not refreshing. It is not relaxing. And it sure isn't fun. It's not a quality of life. You can solve that problem. You can take care of that. You can give the resident of Duxbury the water they need for their activities of daily living. We're not asking for water to fill our pools or to wash our cars every Saturday or to water our lawns once a week. We're asking for water for the basic activities of daily living, to wash our bodies, to wash our clothes, to clean our house, to cook our food. That's all we're asking. Several years ago, a few years ago, the Duxbury community met with the PSA in the Duxbury Community Center. It was standing room only. And there were a few PSA members there. I don't know who. I don't remember who. But we listened to all the people with the dry wells, who are having to dig new wells with dry springs. We listened to all their problems. PSA gave us a form letter. And I don't remember what it said. I remember the two things on it that were important. Do you need the water? And will you use the water if we provide it? Several of us went out on Saturday. And we took these letters. And we went door to door in our community. I had from my home to the Duxbury Elementary School, yes, the Hillsville Elementary School. Every person I talked to, every person I talked to, said, we need the water and we will use the water. And they signed the letter. There was one gentleman who said, I need the water and I would use the water, but I can't afford the water. We need the water in Duxbury. And we need you to provide it for us. Now, if you think I have exaggerated what it's like to live in a home without water, come live at my house for a week. And you'll find it is much worse than what I've told you. It's horrible. It's a horrible way of life. You want to wash your face? You heat two pans of water, one to wash, one to rinse. Want to fry an egg for breakfast? You heat two pans of water, one to wash the pan and spatula and one to rinse. You don't worry about your dishes because you've been using paper plates, paper bowls, paper cups, and plastic silverware since the first of January. And you don't worry about cooking big meals because it takes water to wash all the pots and the pans and the utensils. So you eat a lot of sandwiches, a lot of frozen TV dinners, not quality food, not a quality of life. You can solve the problem. And I think as public service authority, it's your responsibility to solve the problem, to see that your citizens have the basic needs of life. Now, I know you could ask a hundred different things all the time, things that people need, people want. Water is a basic need to life. You cannot live without water. So I think that needs to be at the top of your priority list. You can live without a lot of things. You cannot live without water. And I think you need to address the problem. The problem was addressed before by the community. PSA, we never heard from them again after we gave them the information and the letters. We never heard from them again. You can put this problem on the back burner. You can ignore it. It's going to grow. It's grown since then. Last year was bad. This year's worse. And as Mr. Montgomery said, when we hit the spring and summer and the heat goes up, the problem's going to get worse. And it's not going away. the problem's gonna get worse, and it's not going away. It's gonna grow. You can address it or we'll be here again, talking to you again in a few months or a year. It's your responsibility. We need your help and we need you to do your job and take care of your citizens. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Next is Jean, I don't wanna butcher that, is it Muse?
Hey, Jean.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, wanted to thank you for letting us come and speak to you today. Uh, I, some of the things that I had planned on pointing out have already been pointed out, so I'm gonna sorta muddle through this. Um, but as Nelson and Rebecca have stated, we're here to petition the board to consider bringing the water line down Route 221, which is a major thoroughfare to, you know, Floyd, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, Roanoke. Um, and it's something that could really benefit not only the residents, obviously, but future growth of the area. Um, you know, a lot of people, Floyd, I think, has done an excellent job in reinventing themselves. And a lot of people in Christiansburg and Blacksburg are living in Floyd now, working back in Blacksburg. My father lived in Doug Spur for thirty years and, well, he lived there all his life and then moved around, came back. But, um, while he was at Tech, he lived in Doug Spur and drove to Virginia Tech every day. So it's a commute. And we gotta service this area, though, to catch it up to the twenty-first century. Um, there's not very many people that are willing to move into the area or even stay in the area because of the lack of some of the conveniences um, that the world has gotten used to, i.e. internet, cellphone service, cable, and water. I mean, water, water is just usually not even mentioned because, I mean, it's a necessity, uh, as Rebecca has pointed out. I then mentioned here, or I was going to, about how far you've extended the lines in all the other directions from Hillsville to Galax, to Laurel Fort, to Cana. And I think I had some misinformation. So I'm not really sure how far those water lines go. I know, um, from now, I understand that there's some separate, um, individual well type system set up for certain areas, um, maybe Cana. Um, I thought on the agenda tonight also was for sewage for Cana. Um, sewage is much easier to handle individually than water. And you say, well, you know, there's a lot of people who have, who have used springs, but they've used these springs, as Rebecca pointed out, for a hundred years. The spring's not gonna last forever. You know, the land that we're living on, we're the third generation. I had a son, he, uh, I do have a son, that thought about, um, building on the land that we still have. But when I said, "Well, there's, you know, keep in mind, there's no water, there's no cable, there's no high-speed internet, and there's cellphone service." And he said, "No way." So the area to maintain even the population that it has, you know, it, it, it's tough and it's an aging population. And so you gotta look at future generations, not only my generation, but my children, and they're now children's children, you know? So it, you gotta look at it sorta as an investment and look at your return on investment. Uh, I know that, um, you know, putting in a water line is not cheap. It does cost money and, um, but there are ways to, to maybe help defray the cost. Uh, one idea that I thought of was when you're, if you do hopefully lay the water line down 221, is those people that may not be interested in connection right now, say they're eighty, they're still on a spring and they're like, "Well, I don't really need it, but, you know, somebody's gonna inherit my line, my land," and so they may need it later. Go ahead and charge, ask and charge that person a connection fee. Go ahead and provide that connection point for them. They don't have to connect now, but, you know, you can start building a base there as far as financing it. Uh, I understand there's also some things in your budget as far as COVID relief um, and things like that that could possibly be allocated to this project. It is a, um, severe need in the area, you know? Wells go dry, springs go dry. And, you know, it's a shame to have families that have been on the same land for a hundred-plus years and you say, "Oh, well, you know, fend for yourself. You know, we're not gonna help ya." Uh, I, I don't understand that when, when it's, it's, it's possible, it's very possible. Um, and, and the other thing to, to look at is the return on investment as far as other things springing up in the area, not just new homes, remodeling older homes, but a store. We have no store. We have Doug Spur Deli, um, that's on up the road from us. Uh, and I understand they had to put in a very expensive well system in order to do that. But there's no gas station between Hillsville and Willis except Doug Spur Deli. There's no, you know, there's no beauty shop, there's no nail salon, there's no anything that could be like a home-based business. And again, you're not, uh, here about internet, but high-speed internet is next on the list, but, um, because you can't operate a business out of your home, which was very important during the pandemic, um, without internet. So, um, the, uh, two main reasons that I have heard, uh, some from board members, some from just people, um, that, uh, the reason why the water has not been brought down there as of yet was, um, the cost and interest. I think we've sorta covered the interest part. Uh, as Rebecca stated, we've had meetings before, we had a, we had signed petitions, everyone on 221 signing it. So, you know, that should be a mute, uh, point because there is interest. Um, oh, and the other thing that I, I would hear a lot is, "Well, you know, you have to cross the river. You'll have to cross the river down there." Well, they're referring to, um, the William Thompson Memorial Bridge that crosses Big Reed Island Creek. And as you hear in its name, it's not a river, it's a creek. Um, the bridge, the bridge deck span is nine yards. Um, I don't think that this would be too difficult to cross. Um, twenty-eight feet approximately it is. And, um, I, I, and I was gonna say, wouldn't be any more difficult than going down Fancy Gap Mountain, but may not have done that as yet. But anyway, um, the other thing I wanted to ask you, um, for help is for emergency immediate help. Uh, and that's for people like Rebecca, Nelson, have a cousin who's in his eighties. He has no water. He's not even going to town because he can't. He can't make trips to town to go take a shower. He can't make trips to town to go do his laundry. And he can't afford to buy water, you know, at, at the grocery store to do what is necessary, uh, you know, to flush his toilet. So I was wondering, and I don't know, um, I'm assuming that the town has or the fire department, um, or the water, um, people have a tanker truck. Couldn't this be used to go and fill up their reserve tanks? Um, I don't know how large their tanks are, they weren't quite sure themselves, but being able to fill up a tank and it lasts than three months sure beats going to town three times a week. Uh, I, I really, really would appreciate y'all considering that. And it's because these, these are our citizens. And we need to, to reach out to them and help them. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the consent. Do I have a motion to approve sections A, B, and C altogether or individual?
Trace, I make a motion for B and C. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I don't feel like I can make a motion for approval of the minute.
Okay, I have a motion for sections B and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'll entertain a motion just for section A.
I so move.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
I'd stand.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, next, um, on the agenda is new business. I asked, uh, Mr. Watson to...
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda get a little bit more looking at, uh, first time we had was Exit One, came out of water system interconnect. What we're doing is trying to prepare for, I would say, future. There is a need that is, uh, water to prepare for WAC as far as for infrastructure needs. It's, they have to find out how it's gonna be done and what, uh, the way it's gonna be funded. However, there's two projects that are on a list here that things have looked at in the past. Uh, one of them is connecting Exit One and the Cana Water System together. We currently are able to purchase water off of, um, uh, bounty or, uh, bounty area. Uh, one of the issues we have on the Cana side is that we, we provide water through well. Unfortunately, unfortunately, provide water from home. As we've heard in our, uh, in the show years, one of the things that we were looking at is, uh, we had an engineer work that, um, who brought us many years ago, when it was decided to bring the two together. My understanding, there wasn't enough participation, people really didn't have, uh, the connection, we hope the connection's free, but they had working wells. Okay, so now, uh, um, instead of looking at it as a supply and, uh, more of a safety, one good way and to be on water and, uh, what this will do, the tanks are seven same level and it'll allow them to flood. So you put a line in between the two of them, purchase water through, uh, bounty area and be able to fill both tanks up. So you have less, uh, likelihood of, of having, uh, several, uh, but, uh, uh, what we've done is authorized our, uh, engineer, it wasn't much cost, uh, to put together the original plan that was done many, many months ago in order to have a documented, uh, fair case of money comes out, so we can follow. Okay? Uh, and like I said, it wouldn't be requiring a mandatory connection. It would require, uh, it's more of a safe future, uh, services. It's a way of preparing for that, uh, culture. And as these wells begin to fall, uh, that's, uh, that's more of a, uh, uh, that's the first project. And then the second one is evolve your where, where underneath, like, send order with Exit One on the wastewater project. Exit One is still not, um, still not meeting requirements. So we're still, uh, just sitting there last, uh, with, uh, the, you, honor, if, honor problems we have. Spoke to, uh, an engineering firm, they're going to work with us to see if we're running it right. It's just issues with flows, uh, you know, which is just what it's put in and use different than what it is originally put in. Uh, and now you have more flows, different types of materials are going into it, so, uh, many years ago also, and, uh, there was a time when we looked at having a sewer connected to the bounty area sewer system. What we're doing is trying to have conversations with, uh, VDOT, North Carolina Park and Recreation, and, uh, bounty area in order of the possibility, uh, doing away with that motivation and providing, uh, something to sewer. If they have the capacity, uh, we have the need. Even if the plant that we have now, uh, wouldn't be able to, uh, if I do expand or anything happen at that time, uh, there's no growth possible, uh, from the patience we have on, uh, sewer side. As we go through the process, the costs are, we're having them conversations, uh, we're looking at it along with North Carolina and Virginia. And hopefully we can all partner together and possibly, uh, be here and get out, uh, and, uh, and we might be able to, the cost, what we're hoping is the cost that we're paying right now to run that bounty plant, we can take that, debt finance it in order to pay our debt, get away from bounty. And what that will also do is take, uh, uh, certified, so it can offer it. That's very difficult to find, okay? So that's the two projects that we had that we're looking at also now. Uh, any questions?
No, I'm just thankful that we're finally looking at that route. Um, for two years I've pushed for that. I'm just, I think it's get out of that debt and go on and make something else happen.
Uh, the next item I have is payment option. There was, uh, some concern. We currently, uh, uh, use an online system. The online system does charge a, uh, a fee, uh, pay or payments online. I think it's about, yeah, two ninety-five percent, five dollars adds up, it's, uh, it's, uh, uh, they monitor system, they collect the money, they send us the, uh, the, uh, accounts and the, uh, banks, uh, back to us. We also charge, it's a fee that's adopted by the, the board, many, 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 uh, we, uh, first calls in and makes another payment, we charge, uh, five percent. Uh, by the bank or the bill, we charge the customer five percent. One thing that the county's looking at and we're trying to partner with them on is the bounty plan for some. And we're hoping to find a financial software along with, uh, the PSA, you know, the partner looking at that. Uh, it's not an immediate fix, however, that should be a possible for us to be, uh, now, there will be some credit card fees, uh, once we figure out what our fees are, we'll come back to board and see if that company, uh, board wants it to work and be called. During this time for now, then we'll start looking at costs and see if there's a way to, uh, save. But, uh, fees that they go online and pay, uh, they collect, we don't really have, uh, try to, uh, do that type of, uh, and they do, they do, you know, we, there's a limit on the amount that we've been, uh, charged. You pay two hundred dollars at a time, but when you get over that time, you have to repay that, so that you're doubling all fees. I think it is, uh, it is something, uh, any questions? Sticking down, I guess, the old business, uh, the product chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first item, I went on a little bit on Exit One. We have, uh, authorized a, uh, engineering firm to work with to see what the issue is, we need to report on the flows. There is a higher amount flows in the world than first time plan. However, uh, there is a fault that is not actually one hundred percent flows. Uh, there is capacity, there might be some issues where it could change those, uh, there's a flow that's... There's a flow that when it kicks on and pumps through, there might be some adjustments made on there. We'll work with them, but we'll do that process. Search grant for a plant cranberry and label good lawn area pretty soon. Whether checking manhole, pretty soon they'll start doing smoke testing. Staff will go out, supply, put door things on the doors of all the customers that affect. And the reason why we're doing the smoke test is to see what it's for. Enter by, a lot of towns first will cut a gutter at the sewer line. So the next thing you know, every time it rains, you get rainwater in the sewer and then you pay for a thousand to get a treatment. Also, you have drainage basin for those type of things that you're really disconnected. Usually people on five, it will also help to shift by everything. It's part of the...
I do have a question on that, if I might ask. Are they showing any influx of rainwater and all from pump station to pump station by the numbers? I know that they check them like every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I was just curious if like if it rained, if it was showing like a... Yes, within house. Yeah. Hmm, well, I know a lot of times in the lids and stuff will leak and stuff, so... That'd be good. We definitely don't need rainwater treated. But, sorry.
On the skater system, we are working with an engineer in order to give the VDOC some, hopefully have some things on the thing. And then we'll be able to get that out, get close on one to... As I said, we have a lot of costs, but a lot of times you don't know, you're out of water, so if they call and says we're out of water. Then you have to buy the leaks and this, that, and the other. So hopefully, with the four, you're going to fight up the system. Hopefully, three of them personnel have to go and have to dry out the tanks and see how much water. Bill's the sewer, we're pretty much at a standstill right now. And we look at the opportunity that, you know, we, last week, I believe, we installed a... There was still water coming up in the place on...
All right, is that all? Anybody else with questions? All right, we'll move on to closed session. I do want to ask the attorney, I see him step in and put him on a hot suit, but is... What number would we go in under to talk about the water extensions?
That'd be legal.
If we wanted to discuss it during our closed session? Just like a future expansion, just, you know, to where the citizens have come and spoke to us about?
Oh, you would be going under probably investment of public fund?
Okay. A six? Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session under 2.2-3711, A1, A6, and A5.
So move.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Collins.
Yeah.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And... We could invite Mr. Early in to closed session, cut with Mr. Early.
Yeah, I think so.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCurl.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Now, I'd ask that we certify that we spoke about whereas the Carroll County PSA Authority conveyed in closed session meeting the state percent to the firm of director vote in the motion to close the meeting in accordance to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act whereas section two point two as three seven one one A one, A six and A five of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisor or PSA Authority that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore it be resolved that the Carroll County PSA hereby certifies at the best of each member's knowledge only public business may on public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requires requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed or considered in closed session to which this certification applies and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was conveyed were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. I'll start the certification with Mr. Collins.
I so certify.
Mr. Hill?
So certify.
Mr. McCurl?
So certify.
Mr. Dixon?
I so certify.
And I so certify. So moving down on the agenda, authority members time, I'll start with Mr. Collins. All right, Mr. Hill?
I think I'm good as well.
Mr. McCurl?
We're good.
Mr. Dixon? And I'm good, so entertain the motion for adjournment?
So move.
All right, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All right, another motion, second. I'll start the, any discussion? Start the vote with Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. McCurl?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. I guess we can just sit here and go back into closed session.
Yeah.